We invite all who care to join us in the recitation of Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive our own for trespassing against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. With thy use the kingdom and the power and glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. All we see the councilman's call to order. Please join your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call for Mr. Crone.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Here. Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. McLaughlin, here.
I'm now entering a motion to dispense of the reading of the Journal from February 6, 2023. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense of the reading of the Journal. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
The motion passes. I'll come to the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment before council block, come to the voting, state name and address, and make your comment. During the scene, though, and look forward to reports from standing in special committees. Mr. Gates has the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting tonight.
Mayor, thank you. The committee met last Friday afternoon. The financials are people's packets. Let's take a look at those. We're going to go to the back page. And where we have City Income Tax for 2023 in the month of January, nearly $401,000 were collected. And as members can look across to the left, they'll see that that was the best January of the five years reported there and significantly better, I might add. So that's City Income Tax. We'll take a look at page two. And down at the bottom, we can see how those monies were distributed among individual business and withholding. It's very early in the year, so, you know, it's in just one month of data. So, you know, nothing that we can draw any kind of conclusions or even speculate upon. So let's take a look at the front page. We'll go through some of the highlights. The general fund had a little over $2 million of cash, taking encumbrances. $1,553,000 free and clear. We go down to the street fund, and you can see that the pre-include, there are only $495 there. One of the reasons for that is that there were three pays in January, and so that impacts that more than what it normally would. Health has a healthy balance, free and clear. $351,000 likewise for park, $335,000. First half, real estate taxes are due. It's the first week of March. I want to say the sixth, maybe the sixth or the eighth. But anyways, that first week. Then the county auditor will do a distribution in April. So we'll see, you know, a big increase there for the health of the park. Going down to capital improvements. There's $14,000 free and clear there. The finance director was speculating, and this will be a topic of discussion, I'm sure, when we get into our committee of the whole to discuss the annual appropriations as to what monies are available for projects this year. We do have some outstanding purchase orders for, you know, we had the cruisers that we had ordered that Ford has reneged on. So there's a question, do we just cancel out those purchase orders and then, you know, wouldn't we have a better idea, you know, enter into a different contract? But that's something we can discuss later down the line. Streets, alleys, and catch basins, $460,000 there, free and clear. Then we get into the utilities. Sewer, $49,000 free and clear. Water, $79,000 free and clear. And a little over $4.25 billion in the electric fund. Water and sewer are going to be, you know, they were nip and tuck last year. I don't expect any real difference this year. Going down to hospitalization, a good balance there of $437,000. I had asked the finance director, if we go back up to the City Income Tax Fund, 220, we can see that there are a balance of $425,000 there. The practice has been for years and years to clear out that fund every month, leaving but $50,000 there for, actually for operational expenses to pay the clerks and what have you. We still have the, this is perhaps a strong word. I was going to say specter, but that's too strong. We have the possibility of significant refunds, and that's why the finance director wants to keep those monies, that balance, high. He explained that an income tax return can be amended up to three years past its filing date. So you can see that, you know, that's quite a liability. That window is open for a long time, and we don't want to be in the situation where we would have to make a refund. But quite honestly, we've already distributed those monies to general fund, capital improvements, police corp, and what have you. So I think it's prudent to keep, you know, a larger balance there. Perhaps as time goes by, the finance director, consultation with the income tax clerks, may decide we don't need $425,000 there. But again, well, you know, this member is happy to be led up to the judgment of the finance director. Let's continue on to the next page. Right in the middle, we see the expenditure, the 101 wages. You look across and see that that's significantly higher than what it was in 2022. But again, we had a retirement that was paid out for Officer Fetscher, and there were three pays in January. So that's why that debt number is 66% higher than it was last year for the month of January. Going on to the next page, we have hospitalization right in the middle, where it talks about all funds. We can see that hospitalization is up this year over last year, 11.8%. Well, that was the predicted increase in hospitalization anyway. So that's not a surprise and explanation for that. Looking at the, where our money is in the city treasury. We were informed, the committee was informed, that the finance department has had discussions with Mechanics Bank, who get it signed up as a depository for the city. We were told that things are in order there. So what will happen is the monies that are currently invested in PNC, which no longer has a branch in the city, when those monies come due, those CDs and the treasury bond, those monies very likely will be transferred, you know, to other banks. Not very likely, they will be transferred to other banks, and very likely the Mechanics Bank will be one of those banks. We heard that the current rate for CDs is 4%, which is significantly higher than what we've been hearing, you know, pre-pandemic into the pandemic, when it was, you know, a tenth of a percent, two tenths of a percent. So it's good if you're investing, not so good if you're borrowing. You see, we had total investments, $6.7 million. In checking accounts, $8.8 million. For a total amount in the city treasury as of the end of January, The last sheet there is the sort of Roush, of course, we looked at income tax. Some other notes regarding personnel matters. Mayor, you mentioned that Officer John Reed is now, will be the new School Resource Officer at Pioneer, replacing Officer Fetscher, who is retired as of next week, I believe. And that in the Police Department, there is a candidate, possibility of a late February start. A conditional officer, excuse me, a conditional officer has been extended to that person. Chief Combs had a matter that he came to finance and personnel. I know that copies of handouts were passed out at the committee and that other members have gotten copies of those. We'll discuss those further under new business once the chief is here. Another matter that we discussed briefly has to do with life insurance for elected officials. Of course, that ordinance says that the city provides $50,000 of insurance for each elected official. However, once someone reaches the age of 70, that is cut in half. However, the ordinance overrides that elected officials have $50,000 of insurance. There is one elected official who, of every expectation, will, within the next couple of years, will reach his 70th anniversary of his birth. At that point, the city will need to go out and get an individual life insurance for that individual. This is nothing new. Back when Virginia Swanger was city council, representing the second ward, she achieved her 70th birthday. And I'm not sure if the policy we had at the time cut everyone off over 70 or reduced it to 50%, but I believe it was Finance Director Pax that had to go out and get a policy for her. So that gives the finance department quite a bit of lead time in order to make those arrangements. But any other possibilities the city might do would then make those, that payout taxable to the beneficiary of this particularly elected official. And that would not be right, first of all. And secondly, it would be in contradiction of enacted law. So as I said, the finance department has its homework assignment. The due date is two years away, so it'll be quite a while. Mayor, I think that pretty much takes care of what I wanted to report, same except what Chief Combs will share with us later on. If either my colleague, Mr. Martin, or the finance director have anything to add, we'll certainly share.
Are there any comments or questions from anyone else?
Mayor, I move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated January 31, 2023, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin. I have the motion of the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated January 31, 2023, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you, Councilman Gates.
Mayor, it's my pleasure.
The Utility Streets Committee, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Utility Streets Committee, on the 16th through 30. And the first item business before us was a battery energy storage system. I'll be referring to the BES for the rest of the report. And with us was Joe Glanzman with AEP Onsite Partners. And I believe everyone got a copy of this as well. If not, we'll get you a copy. But he did a presentation for us on cost-effective onsite generation and specifically battery storage to supplement our array of power generation. What was presented to us was a battery storage facility. That would be a 10-megawatt facility, and that would support our increasing mix of intermittent renewables on our grid as well as strategic dispatch to reduce our transmission and capacity peaks. We spent a great deal of time talking about how our bill is actually broken up. And then two-thirds of our power bill is based on transmission and capacity. Starting in around, I want to say, 2015, we as a city decided to make a concerted effort to reduce our transmission costs. We've done this through use of generators as well as emphasizing our peak power time and usage. So this would help that because it will help the impact of our solar panels and make them more efficient to those peak power times. So we essentially would have 10 megawatts to help play with that a little bit. The brass tax on that presented to us was that the transmission savings revenue would be around $600,000 to $60,000 a year. Our capacity savings revenue from this project would be around $290,000 a year. Our total estimated annual project revenue would be around $950,000 a year, meaning that our net savings over the project term of 15 years would be over $5 million. Our goal with this isn't necessarily to reduce rates, but to ensure that our rates stay even, inconsistent. If you look at our rates, our rates have been even and consistent and even consistent on a slower downward slope of a pretty even and consistent. If you look at whether it be Ohio Edison, AEP, et cetera, theirs have been kind of this around, right? So sometimes we're lower, sometimes we're higher. Right now, we're significantly lower. And that consistency allows us to, one, provide consistency to our customers, but also our industrial and commercial needs. So this would just aid and help that significantly. So our next steps are to confirm our interest in the proposed structure. The proposed structure is a fixed annual fee and then shared capacity and transmission savings. It would be 75% of those savings going to us, 25% to our partners. And then, number two, they would assist us in the procurement process. And the AEP Onsite Partners would be partnering with us, similar to what they did with the solar field and solar array. And then, AEP Onsite Partners would handle all the design permitting, interconnection, procurement, construction, commission activities necessary, et cetera, to make that happen. So definitely feel it is a win-win. More of that, more on that to come, but I do anticipate something coming before council sooner than later, similar to what we did with our initial contracts with our solar array, where we agree that we are interested, and it gives us essentially six months to a year to figure out the details on it. But appreciate AEP Onsite Partners for that. And if anybody has any questions about how that will help the transmission costs or misinform myself, I can answer those. But yeah, so that was a majority of what we talked about. We briefly went over the 2023 street paving list. It is completed and ready for bid. Utilizing the street paving analysis study and strategic planning, we developed the following paving list. So the streets that will be listed in the street paving bid specifications will be Auburn Avenue, Steel Avenue from the west end of Auburn. If you turn south there, it's about 120 feet of that hospital property. Jennings Court, Bridge Street, Sharon Street, West Whitney Avenue, the section from the overhead bridge, Sharon Street, Cap Street, Lincoln Drive, Kennedy Drive, and then Main Street, covering what we did with our lead service line replacements. The, this whole, the entirety of this project is slated to start sometime in late July, early August. So it will be past bicycle days and such, especially for the Main Street portion. Our annual street paving project is funded through a two-tenths percent income tax. Our annual projected collections from that are approximately $450,000. Our recent collections have been higher than projections, which means we've been able to do additional paving. 97% of the collections go to roadways, and 30% goes to sidewalk improvement and repair. That current street sidewalk levy does expire this summer 31st of this year. And so we will have a renewal levy presented to voters during the May 2nd primary election. And the administration is working on a communications plan to ease the full capacity because it's definitely needed, and we've been able to do some very good work with it. There are some additional streets that are on the high priority list for resurfacing. Second Street between East Main Street and East Smiley, that's a high priority for next year, so looking forward. Mickey Road, we're currently orchestrating two projects. And so we're trying to prevent a newly paved road from being dug up shortly after it's paved, which is always beneficial. So more to come on that. And then Lamp lighter Lane, as there is more traffic going through there because of some of the industrials work going on, as well as new business will soon be constructed at a former Skarles Car dealership. That business will have interest exit onto Lamp Lighter Lane as well. So that will be kind of part of there. Of course, as always, Division Streets will be monitoring making temporary repairs to these streets throughout the year. All right. Lead Service Line Location Identification Survey. We are sending out a second Lead Service Line Location Identification Survey. That survey will be mailed out with the next utility bill. And it's a paper survey by mail, encouraging everyone to fill that out and return it to the utilities office. There's also a QR code on it to be able to fill that survey out electronically, and an electronic version will be posted on the city website. So we're asking all residents to complete the survey. And I'll make a personal plea to my fellow council members, to on your social media, et cetera, to promote this as well, so we can make sure that we have the best information available. Our completion date is December of this year for survey. All right. Not for a survey, sorry, for the Ohio EPA identified map that I've, so that's the survey. All right. Brief update on the lime softening update. Administration met with Ohio EPA representatives on January 26 and scheduled a, basically a limited scope site visit, discussed the lime softening process and the softening gain compared to the financial cost. The representative agreed there's very little softening gain when compared to the surface water hardness and provided us with next steps to follow. We have to conduct a corrosion control study in accordance with E M G 9119 G D. There is a corrosion control guidance factor. And then we also have to submit a detailed engineer's plan to the Ohio EPA. That procedure is going to talk about the removal of lime softening process as well as a procedure to maintain the proper pH after the lime softening is stopped. And we have contacted an engineer that has experience in water treatment. There is a meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday to discuss the next steps for the EPA. But this is going to be a longer process with the engineers and everything involved. So more to come about that. Yeah, so the next steps are going to take several months to work with, work through with engineering. So more to come on that, but it's just a brief update. Mayor, that's our floor.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin regarding this report? Hearing none, moving forward. Thank you very much for that. Moving forward to reports of city officials. The mayor's report. Since our last meeting, I've attended to the various administrative duties and tasks of the mayor's office. Among other activities, on the 7th, I helped facilitate our Shelby City Health Department staff meeting. On the 9th, participated in a Zoom meeting with a board member of the Community Action Commission of Erie, Huron, and Richland County. On the 16th, held a monthly mayor's staff meeting, and once again, another productive time together as staff. On the 17th, I was delighted to hold a rigor cutting on behalf of Mr. Troy Baker as unveiled the spectacular renovations of his building at 19 West Main Street. It's beautiful both without and within. On the 18th, I was pleased to represent the city at the Jess Raff Award banquet held at the First Baptist, First United Baptist Church. This afternoon, I joined four other city officials taking a CPR class put on by Shelby City Health Department. Mrs. Jeannie Covert, our director of nursing and educator, is a certified CPR instructor. The class presentation was par excellence with a nice blend of instruction and literal hands-on training. Mrs. Covert is available to teach classes in groups of any size. So I encourage our community, please feel free to reach out to her by email or at 419-342-5226. And we have received another notable recognition from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And I want to publicly thank Mr. Geis for his work, all he does, largely behind the scenes as a floodplain manager. This is just another proof of his stellar efforts. So this is a very nice plaque. We have one similar to that hand. This will replace that one. But it is good to know it says here, "The City of Shelby successfully participates in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System." I think you heard about this just a few weeks ago. "The community has undertaken a series of meaningful activities to protect its citizens from losses caused by flooding, and has significantly exceeded the requirements for NFIP participation and effective floodplain management." So very, very good for our city. And once again, kudos to Mr. Joe Geis, our floodplain manager. And that, gentlemen, is my report for this evening. Are there any comments or questions for me? Hearing none. We'll move forward then to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geis covered all the exciting stuff in my report. Other than, than that around my office, there's lots of tax collection going on and we're working the gap conversion, getting that information to the accounting firm. Various month-end or year-end reports that we're still doing and then appropriations is the element in the room, which we all get the excitement of paying carbon on Saturday. That's heard in my report.
Thank you for that reminder. And I will be bringing the donuts and so forth for that, keep our finances sweet. Are there any comments or questions for me to comment in regard to this brief report? All right. Hearing none. Move forward to Mr. Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. Assuming council elects to go into executive session for purposes of discussing pending their imminent court action, I will reserve my comment to them. Thank you.
Move forward then to Mr. Joe Geis, Project Coordinator.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Angela and I were over at the county engineer's office today, in meeting for the Smiley Avenue Bridge. Their contractor has been selected. On that existing bridge was a gas line strapped to the side of the bridge. That has since been removed off of there and poured underneath the ground. We have a water line that I think Mr. Gates will remember, caused us quite some problems in the beginning, but it runs right along the bottom of the bank of the river close to that river. So, that line will be bored underneath the river and won't have to worry about that one anymore. So, they're going to start that on March 1st. Shortly after that, once that water line is completed, they plan on shutting that road down to start replacing the bridge. Don't have an exact date yet, but there are contract days to have that open by October. The contractor states he will have that done long before that, but that's weather pending everything else. So, hopefully, we'll have a lot sooner. Our Broadway Santeri Sewer Project, the line is complete. They're now doing property restoration and so forth. So, when weather's fit here, hopefully soon, we can get some grass planted and so forth. But then we're going back through and doing everything. So, it would be a great improvement for our crews not having to snake that line out all the time and so forth. And our engineer is also working on our South Street Storm project, which is a roped W C project, and that won't be able to start till July, but we can get the planes done and put out the bid. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Geis, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to this report? Hearing none. Move forward then to new business. New business we brought before council this evening, Councilman Gates.
Mayor, the, the police team has a, a draft MOU, memorandum of, excuse me, memorandum of understanding that he presented to finance personnel last week. And our suggestion was, is he present to council this evening.
Thank you. I apologize in advance, I'm a little under the weather, can't tell. So, what, I guess what we're, what we're asking to do and what we've come up with is we have three individuals that are qualified. Civil Service removed the requirement for applicants for police officer to have a peace officer's training certificate. Once that took place, we noticed a bump in applicants. So, we had more applicants than we normally did before. The applicants are younger. And so, we've been doing backgrounds on those and then for the past couple of months, trying to work through a process as to how we're going to do that. So, what this MOU actually covers is an agreement with the union, and I talked to Clemens Nelson about this, I also met with Mr. Eisner for a bit last week. He had some suggestions and things that he thought were important to be in there, so we added those things. And essentially, what we'll, we'll provide is that the City of Shelby will pay for people to go through the police academy and pay them at the lowest step of the pace in the wage scale. They would be on probation throughout that period, and this is to a full-time police academy at N C State. And then, they would sign an agreement, well, let me back up. They would be on probation for a year after the, after they obtain a certificate. So, there's the academy period and then they would still be on probation for another year. And then, they would agree to stay here, once they're certified, they would stay here for five years. If they left within five years from the date of that certification, they would have to pay us the full amount of the academy. So, no amortized amounts, it's either full, all or nothing for five years. And so, the way we, the way I kind of looked at this, once I started thinking about it, was our lateral applicants are starting to gumbel. Those that we are, those that are applying have had some background issues that we've gone through the entire process and then found something that prevented us from hiring them. The problem is, is that testing is very expensive. So, as we go through the testing and we get to the final stage and they don't pass, we've, we've thrown money at something that isn't resolving the issue. And so, originally, I thought maybe we could send one person, but we have three qualified applicants with good backgrounds in the top 10. And my thought is to send all three. So, I believe other ones should have gotten a sheet, but essentially, the difference and kind of how I look at this is, these people are coming in at the first step of the pay scale. Most of our lateral transfers have five or more years, so they're starting at the top step of the pay scale. They're bringing with them vacation, they're bringing with them sick time familiar agencies, they have families, sometimes large families, which increases insurance costs. All of these people are under, I think, age 24. Only one has a family, the other two are single. And if I look at a three-year step, it's eighty-five hundred dollars per student in the academy. At the end of a three-year period, our investment is eighteen hundred dollars because the wage, the wages offset by that much. And certainly, there are risks. If they fail the academy, there was a question about this. If they fail the academy, kicked out of the academy, or don't pass their certification exam, then we would essentially terminate them. Now, we're not asking for them to pay that amount back because I guess my view is, if I have someone who's just starting to work, I don't think they're going to have eighty-five hundred dollars to pay us back. That's the first problem. The second problem is, if we don't think they can pass the academy, then we have a problem with our background process and not a problem with the individual. That's, that's essentially it.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, would the chief explain the timeframe that we're running up against?
Yes. So, the, the, actually, all three of these individuals are so interested in being police officers here, that they've already secured seats in the academy. They've gone through all of the testing, they've been accepted. That academy starts first part of March. It graduates at the end of July, first part of August. So, if we set three, we're currently down six, we're down five officers, one dispatcher. We're looking at a gentleman who I believe is taking the test tomorrow, the state test tomorrow. He has a conditional offer that would bring us down before. These three would close that gap. It would be a 20-week academy and then a 12-week field training period.
Mr. Robb.
This academy local?
N C State.
N C State, at full-time?
Full-time academy, yeah. The, the, there's several added benefits and the more I thought about it, I know when I went to police academy, I went with one other person. That was helpful because it kind of pushed me to do better. We could work together to see if anyone had strengths or weaknesses. I talked to the academy commander, he has said that groups of academy students that come together typically do better, have a better success rate because they're more reliant upon each other. The other thing it does is it, it brings them together to bond. And so, when they come back to us, they're already, they know each other very well, they already know their strengths and weaknesses. I think that if we can get them for five years, we'll probably keep them 25 years. And I think a group of three going, it's going to be much more difficult for one of the three to leave. They're not going to want to leave. And that's really our goal, is long-term employment, not people that are necessarily chasing the highest wage in the, in the area.
Councilman Gates.
Mayor, it's, everyone's well aware of the, the bind that our police departments, not just our department, but all departments around here. And, you know, in an ideal world where it was, dare I say, a buyer's market, it makes sense for us to say, you have to be certified before we're going to hire you. Well, it's not a buyer's market anymore, it's a seller's market. And so, the Civil Service Commission, you know, I think realizing that has said, you know, we need to have a broader throw of the net, if you will, and has said, no, that requirement's no longer needed. And so, as, as the chief says, we've been able to find people. As soon as that requirement was removed, the number of applicants increased considerably. And although lateral transfers are, are fine, I want to be very careful here. There's always the possibility that when people come in with a lateral transfer, they might be bringing their baggage with them. And as he said, the, the pool of laterals has, has dried up. So, you know, that's the situation we're in. Now, the chief had said this, the academy starts the first part of March, is you have a more specific date?
I would say it's the first full week in March.
The first full week, which, okay. Well, the first full week of March happens to start with the 6th, which is our next meeting of city council. In, in, in normal circumstances, we would bring in a resolution authorizing you to, as safety director, to sign this MOU, which by the way, has been unanimously approved by the F O P, I would inform. Council expresses its, its will and desire in three ways, through resolutions, through ordinances, and through motions. So, with that, Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor's director of public safety to sign a memorandum of agreement between the City of Shelby and Shelby F O P Lodge Number 180 regarding the hiring, training, and retention of new employees in the bargaining unit who, at the time of their hiring, do not possess an Ohio peace officer's training certificate or an Ohio peace officer training council certified substantial equivalent.
Sir.
And I've got this written down for the clerk.
Thank you.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gates and second by Mr. Martin. And this is, of course, to the motion that was read here just moments ago. Does anyone need that motion repeated? Do you understand what you'd be discussing and building on? I think we, we put it, and thank Mr. Gates for working on it. And thank you for having it in print. So, is there any discussion on that motion to authorize me? Mr. Crum.
I don't know if it's necessary, but I can certify that we do have the availability of us in the police training line that would appropriate.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I want to.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mark.
Yay.
Mr. Walker.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
That motion to authorize passes, I feel like. And for the new business, this is Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I don't know so much this is new business, but it's timely. So, I couldn't figure out how to print this out, so I had to bring my laptop here. So, let me wake it up. Of course, we're well aware of the, of what has happened in East Palestine. And I know there are people who are wondering if that could happen here. Well, oh, yeah, there it comes, probably will. Let me say, we don't need to worry whether such an accident could happen here because it already did. And I want to take people back to 1969. Bring this up. This is from the Shelby Daily Globe from, there it comes. Thursday, September 18th, 1969. And of course, technology is, it's going to fight me. Here we go. The headline, "City's Normalcy Resumes After Train Derailment." Normalcy is returning to the city today after the derailment of 30 cars of a Penn Central freight train at the Shelby Depot Wednesday morning. After having luckily avoided a near tragedy that could have affected residents within at least a quarter mile radius, Shelby fire and police officials are still keeping an eye on the smoldering ruins of 10 cars. The derailment apparently occurred when a wheel from one of the cars in the freight train flew off and set the car sliding, tearing up 500 feet of track and causing a 10-car pileup local law enforcement officer surmise. Let me explain. In, in, in an automobile, the axle is fixed and the wheels turn independently. On a train, the two wheels and the axle are one solid unit. The whole unit turns, very different than, than a vehicle. However, Penn Central spokesman at the Shelby Tower said today, the accident is still under investigation. Danger of an explosion loomed when, through tracing serial numbers on tank cars, it was learned that a tank car at the bottom of the pileup was filled with carbolic acid. Firemen tried to fight the blaze, which is believed to have started in a carload of paint and at the same time, kept enough water pouring on the acid tank car to keep it cool. Shortly after 1:00 P. M., the danger of explosion of the acid car became more imminent when the tank car with the acid started to leak. Bystanders were asked to leave the area and firemen moved to the area with oxygen equipment to battle the blaze. Now, just another comment, it said they traced the serial numbers on tank cars. It used to be that firefighters would show up at a train derailment and had no idea what they were facing. I remember Chief Corbus told me one time, he said, if people knew what went through this town on the railroads, it would curl their hair. Now, fortunately, there's a law that requires placards on tankers and railcars so that firefighters and other emergency personnel, when they show up, they can see, oh, that's this number, we know that this number is that. And so, they have a great advantage. First of all, they can get a pair of binoculars and look at it from a distance instead of getting right up and getting a serial number off a car. You can only imagine how dangerous that would be. About 1:30 P. M., Ginter's Place and a cocktail lounge, both on Broadway, also standard tube on East Smiley Avenue, were evacuated because of fumes escaping from the tank car. Residents living directly across from the accident scene were urged to evacuate their homes and other residents in the nearby area were advised to stay indoor, inside their homes with windows and doors closed. A strong north wind filled the downtown area with smoke from the blaze. Gentlemen, in September of 1969, I was an eighth grader at Shelby Junior High School. And I remember very well that school being filled with acrid smoke. I was there. All regular and volunteer firemen worked at the scene until 3:30 A. M. today. At press time, the remains of the derailed cars were still smoldering. Railroad spokesmen said that cars carried bricks, paint, paper, tires, iron, coal, and assorted auto parts. Of the 100-unit train, that's small by today's standards, by the way, 58 cars were loaded. The first wrecked train from the eastern end of the line, Collinwood, arrived at 4:45 P. M. Wednesday and immediately began work writing the derailed cars. The same wrecked train also brought in new sections of track. A wrecked train from the west end of the line came from Marion about 3:45 P. M. Wednesday, but was unable to get close enough to the scene because of the fire and heavy smoke. The local police department called all available men into action totaling 95 and a half extra and overtime hours of duty. Police directed traffic at the scene and directed emergency squads into position. The fire department took the quad- The fire department took the quad, the recently purchased aerial chief, and pumper trucks to the scene. The Mansour Fire Department brought to Shelby a pumper and three firemen, volunteers, and regular men from Tyro, Lexington, Ontario, and Mansour also assisted. The sheriff's department sent nine auxiliary deputies and 15 international radio patrolmen to the scene, where the radio men spent more than 11 hours. A Richland County Rescue Assistance Crew, React, was brought in to help divert traffic from the northeast section of the city. In addition, members of the local J.C.'s group volunteered the use of their J.C. Red Van to broadcast to residents in the Broadway area that they should remain in their homes and keep the doors and windows closed. Quote, "All our city police and firemen are to be commended for their work at the disaster," Mayor R.M. Wilkinson said today. He continued... No, excuse me, a different quote from different person. Quote, "This entire operation points up the need for more men and equipment in civil disasters such as we experienced Wednesday," unquote, John Ward, the civil defense director, said today. He continued his quote. The mayor plans to meet soon with civil defense officials to discuss plans for any future disaster. Only one minor injury was reported as a result of the derailment. Martha Grimwood of Grimwood Drive stepped into some acid at the scene of the blaze and was treated at Shelby Memorial Hospital for chemical burns on both feet and later was released. I know Mrs. Grimwood, she still lives on Grimwood Avenue. Hospital authorities said that several other persons came to the hospital Wednesday and were examined for possible acid burns, but none were treated. Quote, "Whatever caused the derailment is buried underneath that pile of cars out there," one railroad official said Wednesday afternoon, pointing to the piled-up burning wreckage. We, quote, "We won't know the cause until the fire is out and we can pull the cars apart," close quote. First reports from the accident scene Wednesday morning said that two trains had collided, but it was later learned that a deadhead engine in tow among the freight cars was thought to have been the engine of a second train. Early today, the tracks were cleared of debris and normal BNO and Penn Central trains were being channeled through the crossover. So... It can happen, it did happen. There are some differences, a lot of differences, between 1969 and 2023. One that's very important is, and not to be negative toward the firefighters at the time, but our firefighters today are much better trained and much better equipped than what firefighters were back then. Another advantage, of course, I mentioned that the tankers have a placard on them so that it's not a guesswork. Firefighters and other first responders know what they are getting. The CSX tracks through Shelby are rated at 55 miles per hour. When they hit the diamond, however, the engine has to slow down to 45. But once they're past the diamond, they can pick up speed. The other disadvantage is that the trains are significantly longer than what they were back then. And one doesn't need simply to stop and cross any count the number of cars, but the simple fact that most of the CSX trains that I've observed have a helper engine. They need that helper engine because they're much longer, much heavier trains. So, can it happen here? Yes, it can, yes, it did. We hope that what happened in East Palestine never happens in Shelby and quite honestly, never happens anywhere else.
Mr. Gates, that is an amazing piece of history that I was totally unaware of. So thank you for paying for attention. And one last in front of us, while...
As I said, Mayor, I lived through it.
Yeah, that's amazing. Mr. Brown?
I would like that, Mr. Gates. So what did the train derail on?
That, I didn't... I just got the first article. I didn't... I had to try to remember when this was to find the article. But, you know, it's, again, September 69. That's a good starting point to search on the globe.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Where's the diamond at? Well, it's right behind the Bride Field where the Yalashun Railway crosses the CSX tracks.
It's by the bottom of the diamond? Or is there an actual...
Well, if you look at the rails, you look at the piece of rail, it looks like a diamond.
Is that... Oh, not blue stuff, but interesting stuff. All right. Any other new business? Before then, to unfinished business? Nothing new at this point, but the future use of the Mississippi Fire Station. Any other unfinished business? Move for the manifestation, Mr. Brown.
Ordinance number three, 2023. Enacting Section 204.06, Mayor James Gee, in the conference room, Chapter 204, Official Standards and the Codified Ordnances of the City of Shelby.
Move for third reading.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the third reading of Orders Number Three, 2023. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Three, 2023 passes as third reading.
Move the arts be taken and passed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Orders Number Three, 2023. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Three, 2023 passes.
Ordinance number four, 2023. Enacting Section 230.08, Wedding Piece of Chapter 203, Mayor of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Shelby.
Third reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Gates for the third reading of Orders Number Four, 2023. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Four, 2023 passes as third reading.
Move the arts be taken and passed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of Orders Number Four, 2023. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Four, 2023 passes.
Ordinance number five, 2023. Authorizing the Consumer Price Index, CPI, to be adjusted upward above the allowable percentage for the language in the rate adjustment provision of Chapter 1044, Sewer Charges, Section 1044.02, Conditions of Service Rate Schedule, and the Codified Ordnances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for second reading?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the second reading of Orders Number Five, 2023. Discussion? Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. During the previous council, I had voted nay on the subsequent ordinance. The reason being is that... The reason it comes before councils is because of this requirement to come for council for anything above the 5%. We had adjusted the rate from being able to do 3% to 5%, and it was my opinion that that additional 0.7% may be unnecessary. I should have explained all this before. I voted the previous time, so for that, I apologize. However, it has come to my attention that because we've been kind of a high and the hate law in that 3% adjustment, the reason we made this change in the first place, that that 0.7 adjustment this time is indeed not a trivial 0.7%, but indeed needed. So I will be voting for these two ordinances. So I just wanted to explain my votes to my fellow council members, those others as well, and so...
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Five, 2023 passes as second reading.
Ordinance number six, 2023. Authorizing the Consumer Price Index, CPI, to be adjusted upward above the allowable percentage for the language in Rule 43 of Chapter 1040, Water, Section 1040.04, Rules, Regulations, and Fixed Charges for the municipal water system of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for second reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the second reading of Orders Number Six, 2023. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Six, 2023 passes as second reading.
Ordinance number seven, 2023. Amending Ordinance Number 29-2022, Temporary Appropriations and Declaring Emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Check.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
That motion passes?
Move the arts be taken and passed. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Orders Number Seven, 2023. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, this ordinance is necessary to put the financing in place so that we can bid on our 2023 paving project.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Seven, 2023 passes.
Ordinance number eight, 2023. Amending Section 204.03, The Memorative Dates of Chapter 204, Official Standards and the Codified Ordnances of the City of Shelby.
Move for first reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the first reading of Orders Number Eight, 2023. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, the other day, I stumbled across something about Charles Follis and realized that he is an individual who is worthy of recognition. His birthdate, the anniversary of his birthday was February 3rd. And this ordinance would establish February 3rd as Charles W. Follis Day in the City of Shelby and would commemorate that in ordinance.
Thank you for that. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Orders Number Eight, 2023 passes as first reading.
Resolution Number Seven, 2023. Authorizing the mayor as director of public safety of the City of Shelby to apply for the Priority One grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the purchase of emergency medical supplies.
Move the arts be taken and passed.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of Resolution Number Seven, 2023. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, the fire chief is present. I wonder if he'd like to come forward and give us a brief explanation.
Sure, we will.
Sure. This is a grant we do every year. Collecting seepel fine money. Last, during COVID, we made $410. We get as high as a couple thousand dollars. So once the money comes in, the division of EMS kind of slices the pie up and you get a piece. So we could, like I said, we do this every year. It's for non-disclosable EMS goods. So anything from backboards, seat collars, recording software, education, those kinds of things. Thank you.
Any other questions? How about this?
Mayor, there's talks on page 3 of 5, the operating budget, $1,900,000. My question is, does that include the three additional employees that started?
At the time I wrote that, no. I don't think so. We take each of that.
I seem to recall that the $1.9 million is a number we use for a member of the year. So... I'll check that. Well, we know it's going to be significantly more. I think a better figure could be put in here. You know, I don't know if it makes our chances any better or any worse, but it would certainly make it more active.
Good point. Do you have it, Mr. Crown?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure you do. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Resolution Number Seven, 2023 passes.
Resolution Number Eight, 2023. Approving the Plans and Specifications and Authorizing the Mayor as Director of Public Service to Advertise Your Bids and Enter into a Contract for the 2023 Paving Project within the City of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Move the resolution to be passed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Resolution Number Eight, 2023. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. You look at the paving documents, and one of the bigger things that is different this year since the charter amendment, not being able to go over the EMS estimate, where you're down to 10%, however, with the original $600,000 that the finance director had certified for this and then the additional 200 that was just put in appropriations. We only have $800,000 in our temporary appropriations. So you'll note on there that we do not go over $800,000 on there. So that's one of the bigger things. If there's too much more than the normal. Just the project dates, to make sure we're in with our financing and so forth. And bicycle days are not starting until after July 1st, but being done by December 3rd. That's been our normal conclusion date, and contractors, they like that. They can get some of the other... We're on the books, but they can get some of their other bigger work done first and then finish up with us. That's pretty much the bigger things, back to the normal for the rest of it, so...
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Resolution Number Eight, 2023 passes. Miscellaneous business and miscellaneous business for council this evening? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I move the council go into executive session for a conference with the director of law concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to go into executive session for the reasons so read and quoted. Discussion? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, if this motion should pass, I would request that you and the finance director accompany the council and the law director and go into executive session.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
That motion passes, council goes into executive session at 8:08.
It will take long for us. It won't take long for us, about two hours.